Can you all hear me okay? Good, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna wave. There we go, good. Welcome to this candidate's forum for seat six for the Sunnyvale City Council. I'm Elaine Manley from the League of Women Voters and I'll be the moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters hosts forums like this to allow the voters to see the candidates and hear them address questions of interest to the public. Our goal is to enable the voters to learn more about the candidates so that they can make informed choices. Please note that the League never supports or endorses a candidate or a political party. Now, four of the seven seats on the Sunnyvale City Council are up for election this November. The candidates have to run for a particular seat and all Sunnyvale voters get to vote for one candidate for each seat. We are conducting separate forums for each seat to make it easier and we're doing this over two nights. We did the first two seats on Thursday, now we're doing seat six and seat seven. The order was chosen randomly and this forum, as I mentioned, is for seat six. We have Jim Davis and Nancy Smith. Now, the candidates have agreed to a format and ground rules for this forum. I will pose questions for them and they'll, and we have designated response times of ninety seconds or sixty seconds. A timer is at the front here and they will help them pace their responses and please stop on time. Each candidate has two thirty-second rebuttal cards. You'll see them flash a red card at me. Those are the rebuttal cards. And they have thirty seconds to rebut a remark from one of the candidates. The rules do require that all candidate responses, including the rebuttals, pertain to the current question, please. Now, the questions for this forum were developed by a team of League members based on their own research as well as questions submitted by the public via email. We will not be taking questions from the audience this evening. The questions do not reflect the views of the League of Women Voters nor the members who worked on those questions. Instead, we're trying to ask questions from different perspectives within the city community and our goal is to provide enough information to help voters make a choice between the candidates. This forum is being recorded and it is aired live on Sunnyvale's government channel. The ground rules ask the candidates not to use recordings of this forum for campaign purposes. We also encourage the audience to not record the forum because we want it to be shown in its entirety and we will tell you how to access the forum at the end of tonight's program. Finally, we ask that the audience please refrain from displays of support or opposition and please hold your applause until the end of this, of each forum. So, now we turn our attention to the candidates and thank you both for running for office and for participating in this forum. Your speaking order for the opening question was determined from a random drawing. We'll start with Jim Davis. You have ninety seconds to answer. What are your qualifications and what motivates you to serve on the City Council?
Well, I thank you very much for everybody for taking an interest in local city elections. They're very important because it's your local city candidates that give you the light that goes to your homes, you know, the streets that you drive on, public safety that takes care of our families. My qualifications are that, you know, after thirty-six years in the field of law enforcement and during that thirty-six years fielding a number of very specific leadership positions, I decided to run for the Sunnyvale City Council. The voters were kind to me five years ago and elected me to the council. During my five years of service, I served on over twelve committees that represent the citizens of Sunnyvale. Everything from the Association of Bay Area Governments to the County Expressway Commission to the National League and California League of Cities. And so, I have a, a long history of accomplishment. And in the, in the five years that I've been there, I've been able to author a number of very important pieces of legislation dealing with traffic studies, comprehensive traffic studies for the safety of our children, increasing the minimum wage and also local hiring ordinances. So, I'm proud of my accomplishments and I look forward to serving the people in the next four years.
Thank you. Nancy Smith?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and thanks to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. This is a great service to the community and I really appreciate it. My extensive experience in getting things done leaves me very well qualified to serve Sunnyvale as a City Council member. In my work on nonprofit boards and business leadership capacities and on boards and commissions, I'm frequently asked to serve each group as the leader. Under my leadership as the Rotary Club President, we provided life vests for low-income kids at Fremont Pool and we also brought together donors and nonprofit agencies to serve kids' food and programs during the summer months. Under my leadership on the Water District Environmental and Water Resources Commission, I reorganized the committee structures to give the members more say in the policy decisions that they really cared about. And as the Chair of Housing and Community Services Committees for both the county and for the city, we evaluated and prioritized projects that were the best-run and most impactful for the community. This is important because the city government has the biggest impact on the quality of life, including traffic, public safety, addressing climate disruption, and sustainability. I'm your voice on City Council.
Thank you. Alright, this next question, we'll start with Nancy. You have sixty seconds to respond. The question is, "For some residents, the city initiative currently on the ballot highlights concerns about decision-making by the city council. What would you do as a council member to encourage trust and confidence in city decision-making?"
Yes, thank you. I feel that one of the things that concerns the citizens the most is they felt that the council didn't listen to them. And one thing that I would like to do is when things come before the city, I would ask the staff very pointedly, what, what was the community outreach for each, for each measure that's being considered? It seems like we need joint problem solving. So, the citizens need to come together and jointly solve problems. What the city was trying to solve with Measure M was to provide for more public schools and a branch library, but that came at the expense of the public spaces. So, I would like the citizens jointly to be able to understand the trade-offs and what's being asked and I think that council could have done better to ensure that there were joint decisions made with the community.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, the situation that arose over the Rayner Park Activity Center was a long history. It started out, you know, with the, the council recognizing the fact that we needed to upgrade those facilities to make them inhabitable. And so, we looked at what did it cost us and we, we discovered it was over eight or nine million dollars. So, we initially decided to try to lease the buildings out and when the council decided, "We don't want to be landlords anymore, let's sell the property." It was at that point, it was my, my idea, that we should tear the buildings down and increase the green space on, on that property. Yes, the council majority voted consistently to sell the property because there was an idea to take the money that was going to be used from that and do the public library at Lakewood Park. I thought it was a bad idea for not listening and the thing that even made it worse was when we said that we entered into an agreement with Stratford Schools that said that they had a priority use of that park.
Thank you. Jim Davis, we'll have you start with the next question. "What is your understanding of the relationship between the city council and the city staff? When there are differences between council and staff, how would you deal with disagreements between you and the staff?"
Well, it is the policy and procedures that, you know, if we have issues with city staff, that we go to the city manager. Because we have, as members of the council, only two employees. We employ the city attorney and the city manager and they answer directly to the council. So, it is those two people that we have to influence to make sure that our voices are heard and that staff gets the message that we're trying to send. Additionally, you know, we here on the dais during discussions on council issues, you know, also send a message to staff in many, in many cases. And sometimes that's the way that we handle some of the prickly problems. But in any case, there is a delineated way to handle those kinds of issues.
Thank you. Nancy Smith? Sure, so what is your understanding of the relationship between the city council and the city staff? And when there are differences between council and staff, how would you deal with disagreements between you and the staff?
My understanding is that the city council manages the city manager and the city attorney and yet, we do manage the, the city as a whole and I would hope that the city council has an open-door policy to some extent with the city staff when they can. However, for any issues that arise, we would work through the city manager and the city staff to address any concerns that we had. And furthermore, we set the policy in the direction and if you will, the vision for the city. So, to the extent that the staff aligns to the vision that's set forward by the, by the citizens, then we should have smooth sailing and certainly a great opportunity to make Sunnyvale a great place to work for the city staff because they'll feel supported by their management and also by the city council.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Nancy. Sixty seconds to respond. "Is Sunnyvale doing enough to help relieve the homeless problem in the South Bay? If not, what more can we do?"
I feel proud of Sunnyvale actually in this regard. When we had an apartment fire in the summertime, not only did the community come together, but the city council itself came together to help those who were homeless. And I just love Sunnyvale for having a heart and a compassion. And again, a couple of weeks ago, the same thing happened. There was an apartment fire and people were placed in homes. Could we do more? We absolutely could do more. We have the opportunity to support Measure A, I mean, sorry, just A, Measure A, on the ballot and that could provide funding for more housing for low-income people. I would like to see Sunnyvale become a sanctuary for people with, who are survivors of domestic violence. So, if A passes, I certainly hope to, to provide services for those people. And we also have several projects in the works that I support and will be working with staff once on council to manage.
Thank you. Jim Davis?
Well, homelessness has been one of the top agenda items on my agenda as a council member. When we closed the Armory and, and started the redevelopment of those properties for homeless housing projects, I started the Sunnyvale or North County Cold Winter Task Force where I brought together citizens, government representatives, and organizations, you know, to try and find an answer to the homeless problem in the North County. We don't realize it, but every evening, there's over two thousand people in North County that go homeless and we need to find answers to those problems. And one of the things that we've done is we've worked hard with the county in establishing a shelter that's going to be out on Hamlin Court which will house a hundred and twenty-five. So, that leaves one thousand and some people still unhoused every night, but it's a good start in the right direction.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Jim Davis. The question is, "What can be done to create more affordable housing in Sunnyvale?"
Well, more affordable housing is a top priority not only of the citizens or the city of Sunnyvale, but for all the communities in the Bay Area. The San Francisco Bay Area is the economic engine of the state of California and because of that, we have found that we've increased the land value of the property in our area to such an extent that we're pushing people out. So, when I started, you know, on the council in nineteen, in two, two thousand and eleven, you know, land prices were approximately three million dollars an acre. They're now over six million dollars an acre and it's very hard to figure a way to build affordable housing on six billion dollars. Fortunately, we have some far, farsighted government figures in the county who have proposed a nine-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar affordable housing bond. And by using that money and leverage in it, we're going to be able to build housing that's going to be affordable for all ranges of people who are looking for, for a safe place.
Thank you. Nancy Smith?
So, we have a problem in this area with our jobs housing fit. And what that means is that for every high-wage job we add, we also add three jobs or four jobs that support those jobs. For every four-point-five low-paying jobs, we have one affordable housing unit in Sunnyvale. So, we have a strong need to provide more affordable housing and many of us have noticed that there's denser housing going in. We need to make sure that, ensure that thirty, twenty, twenty-five percent of those are below market rate so that people who live here and work here can, can afford to grow, to grow their families here and to, to grow old here. We need to really focus on affordable housing more aggressively than we have been.
Thank you. With our next question, we'll start with Nancy Smith. You have sixty seconds. The question is, "Butcher's Corner is a property of about five acres near the intersection of El Camino, Wolf, and Fremont. Setting aside the current development proposal, what would you like to see happen on the Butcher's Corner property, property?"
That's my neighborhood actually and I enjoyed having it as a vacant lot. It, it's, it's sad to see it go as a vacant lot and it could have been a park, but that's not what happened. It's owned by, by a person who worked to annex it to the city and now the city has, is looking at proposals put forth by that developer. We are in negotiations to get something that we all can live with. I hope that it is both, that it affords us some mixed use, that we have retail in that area. I also hope that it provides some affordable housing units, as I mentioned earlier. And most importantly, I hope that it has the least impact as possible on the, the neighborhood. If we can construct it, it's going to be multi-story. If we can construct it in a way that it tapers, that it impacts, has the least impact on that neighborhood, I would like to see those design elements.
Thank you. Jim Davis?
Well, Butcher's Corner is the eye of the perfect storm. There is a great deal of concern in regards to the density of building on that particular corner. But there's also a very real need for more housing in our city to meet the, the housing jobs imbalance. The, I've served on the Grand Boulevard Initiative which is a citizens group and, and local government group that looks at what's going to be developed along the entire length of El Camino Real from Daly City to San Jose. And it says, you know, based on all of our conjunctive research, that density in housing is something that the El Camino should be set for. So, while I know that there are people who are not real happy about the fact that we may have to build some sort of density, it's the right place for it. And, you know, just as the Sobrato Development down on El Camino at Grape was a good place for mixed retail as well as housing. So, let's continue.
Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with Jim. You'll have ninety seconds to respond. The question reads, "Many residents are concerned about negative impacts of growth and development such as worsening traffic or overcrowded classrooms. What can the city council do to manage growth so as to maintain a good quality of life for Sunnyvale residents?"
Well, we're fortunate in one respect. As much as the city of Sunnyvale as well as our surrounding cities, Santa Clara, Mountain View, Mountain View, and Cupertino, we are all experiencing growth and growth at a fairly good pace. So, what do we need to do to control that? Well, we need to have well-fashion general plans as well as specific plans to be able to put housing in the right areas and jobs in, in the correct areas. One other thing that the city of Sunnyvale is doing and will continue to do is we're trying to build houses near jobs. So, that means the north part of our city is experiencing more and denser housing development than is in the, the south end of the city, which is well, already well-established and, and built out. So, what we need to do is we need to find ways to build a variety of level of housing, you know, in the north where we've already created the jobs. And we need to stick to the plans that we've developed for Perry Park, for the Lawrence Station area, for the Moffitt Park areas. To make sure that, you know, we are doing things that aren't adversely affecting our traffic and we are not adversely affecting our housing situation. And to the issue of traffic, we're looking this November at a six-billion-dollar bond act which will solve a lot of the problems in regards to traffic in our city.
Thank you. Nancy Smith? So, the question was, "What can the city council do to manage growth so as to maintain a good quality of life for Sunnyvale residents?"
This is similar to the question that was last, asked last week about whether Sunnyvale's more urban or suburban. And my, I grew up in Chicago and that, that city has a great public transit and it's also got some great neighborhoods. There were some, there's maybe, you know, you've heard of this famous architect that was from around there, Frank Lloyd Wright. So, there is a lot of a push to preserve the neighborhood flavor in some of the neighborhoods. Yet, they manage to have enough density and enough public support of public transit. So, we can grow and we can be a good neighborhood. We have a general plan that is supposed to be the roadmap that the citizens come together and set the vision for our city. And yet, recently, we've gotten a lot of specific plans for each of our neighborhoods. And quite frankly, after twenty, twenty-four-hundred pages of specific plans, people get kind of tired of looking at that. And we need what I consider to be an overall vision of what Sunnyvale needs. We need walkable, livable neighborhoods and a decreased use on cars and increased use on public transit. Together, we can come up with a vision that makes the city great. We have a lot to build on and I look forward to serving on the council to make that happen.
Thank you. So, for this next question, Nancy, you'll go first. You have ninety seconds to respond. "What proposals do you have to alleviate traffic congestion in Sunnyvale and what viable public transit options do you envision for people working or living in Sunnyvale?"
These multi-part questions are fun. So, what ideas do I have? Well, actually, this is one of the reasons that I'm running for our city council. I live in the Lawrence Station area and when I saw the Monticello thing go up, I was just appalled and also happy. I was happy because there's more housing in the area, but I was appalled because it's on my route to work. And Lawrence is already really, well, just crazy busy already. So, I went to my employer and said, "You're building this great new building in Santa Clara, what can you do to get people off the streets? Can you maybe do something like a cash-back program? Can you pay people not to drive?" And they said, "Well, yeah, it's a little late for that, but you know, hey, you look like you have a lot of passion for this. We're going to put you on the Silicon Valley Leadership Group's Transportation Policy Committee." So, as part of that, I helped advocate to put Measure B on the ballot. And Measure B will help us with infrastructure to get more, to get more pedestrian-friendly things, to get more BART extended, to get more CalTrains, electrification. That's not enough. We need a culture change. We need to get people out of their cars. So, I am working diligently with my company to help that happen. And one thing is that they said that their city, Santa Clara, wasn't, they would, they would have done more, but Santa Clara said no.
Thank you. Jim Davis?
Well, I serve on the Valley Transportation Authorities Policy Advisory Committee as well as the VTA's Bus Rapid Transit Policy Advisory Committee. So, transportation in our area is not a subject that is new to me. In fact, we are looking at a, as has been discussed, a six-billion-dollar transit bond which will bring the BART to Santa Clara. It'll enhance and double the strength of CalTrain running up and down the peninsula. It will, it'll provide major improvements along Lawrence Expressway. It'll give us money for grave separation at our two railroad crossings so that it'll make CalTrain even a more viable option. Above and beyond that, I have advocated and continue to advocate Transportation Demand Management Program. And the program that, you know, I have talked about seriously for a number of years is an above-ground rail system that takes you directly from the point that you get on to your destination without a stop. It also would be solar-powered. And I believe that this would be a major step forward in creating a transit system that would take care of that last mile trip from our transit stations to the places where people are working and get the wheels off the road.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Jim Davis again and this is a sixty-second question. "Sunnyvale had a history of strong fiscal management based in part on its long-term budgeting practices. However, in recent years, discussions on financing major capital projects have centered on bonds or transactions of city-owned lands. Do you think there has been a shift away from long-range planning towards short-term thinking within city decision-making? And do you support budgeting to set aside the money that will be needed for future capital projects?"
We still have a very excellent long-range planning program within the city of Sunnyvale. We, we are noted for that throughout the entire Bay Area. We're one of the only cities that looks at twenty-year budget forecasting. And that helps us, you know, to determine the kinds of projects that we can push forward as we go from year to year and those programs that we have to put on a longer-term view. So, no, I don't think that we have a problem with long-term budgeting or idea planning. I think that we're on course to do exactly what you're asking in your question. And I think that the city of Sunnyvale will continue to do an excellent job at bringing quality projects to the entire city over the next many years.
Thank you. Nancy Smith?
So, I see no evidence that there is a shift to focus more on the short-term, short-term gains. However, when I'm on council, I will definitely continue to support the long-term budgeting process. We need to also ensure that we match the funding source with the kind of project it is. So, for instance, the sewer fund, the sewer refurbishing project for thirty-three million dollars, it's appropriate to have a bond for that. So, we need to match the kinds of funding with the kind of project it is. Our city, our city charter only calls for a ten-year budgeting process and we go above and beyond and do twenty years. Once on council, I will definitely push to continue that, that mechanism.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Nancy. Sixty-second response. "How much money do you intend to spend in your campaign and how much have you accepted from donors who are related to real estate development? And what would you say to voters who are concerned about the potential for campaign money to influence city council decisions?" Want me to say it again?
Yes.
Sure, I can do that. There were several questions in there. "How much money do you intend to spend in your campaign and how much have you accepted from donors who are related to real estate development? And what do you say to voters who are concerned about the potential for campaign money to influence city council decisions?"
I plan to spend as little money as possible and yet, send out two or three mailers. Or to spend some money to invest in, in ways to reach out to voters using new techniques, sort of like a call list to, to minimize the cost for voters because I know it's expensive and people don't like to spend money on campaigns if they don't have to. I'm taking zero money from developers so far and I do, I have been asked or supported very much by affordable housing and environmental people who, who are concerned about affordable housing and the environment. So, a lot of my contributions are from individuals who are from the region or the community and who care a lot about electing somebody who shares their values and who works collaboratively, collaboratively with other people. I do feel that I have a connection with those people because they have supported me and welcome other contributions.
Thank you. Jim Davis?
Well, it's unfortunate that we're faced with a presidential year election because that driving cost through the, the skylight. When I ran in two thousand and eleven, it cost me approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, to run my campaign. When I ran in two thousand and eleven, it cost me approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, to run my campaign. This year, we're looking at a budget of possibly as much as fifty thousand dollars. A good chunk of that is going to come out of my own pocket. I haven't, I do not take any money from developers who currently have plans before the city of Sunnyvale. I have received about two thousand dollars in money from people who are in the development business, but none of which have current ties to city projects. Most of my money has come from friends, from out of the city and around the area. And there are a lot of people who are retired who are supporting my campaign.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Jim Davis. It's sixty seconds. What are the greatest challenges Sunnyvale faces in the coming years?
The greatest challenges are the challenges that we've talked about quite seriously here this evening. And that's affordable housing, you know, because we need to have a good balanced community, you know, to be able to continue to achieve the successes that Sunnyvale has had for so many years in the past. We need to solve transportation problems. This transportation, we all know, as it used to be, traffic would disappear by eight-thirty or nine o'clock in the morning. And now you get on the roadways and it's still congested at, at ten. You know, so we need to find ways to, to be able to handle those and make our city a more livable community. And I think that we can do that by passing Measure A for affordable housing, passing Measure B for transportation, and continuing on the strong stewardship of the public's money as we have done for the last sixty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Smith. Sixty seconds.
I think the top two issues are what I would categorize as growth and climate disruption. So growth is not just about the fact that we have, we're expecting three hundred thousand more people in Santa Clara County by the year twenty thirty. It's also that when I came here to Sunnyvale twenty-two years ago, twenty-three years ago, our economy in California was the eighth largest in the world and now it's the sixth largest in the world. Many of us have done very well, but others of us are having to commute further and further because they cannot afford to live here. And that's impacting traffic, it's disrupting our climate. And that brings me to the second thing. We have just horrible news about what's happening to the climate in California and around the world. And we are in a position to take leadership, to do something about that. And I, for one, am not losing optimism. I want to get to work and roll up my sleeves once I'm on city council to address those concerns.
Thank you. All right, this next one, we'll start with Nancy. You have sixty seconds. And this one, we'll turn to the question that we gave to you in advance to provide you guys an opportunity to, to address something that we didn't ask about. Would you please state and answer a question you wish you had been asked?
I got to set myself up for this one. I wish we had been asked, what are you going to do to help with addressing climate change, climate disruption? And I'm proud to say that I have the endorsement of the Sierra Club and the League of Conservation Voters. And I would like to state that I think our city can beat the twenty thirty goals set forth by AB thirty-two. How I would do that is that we, we, we can start early by, by starting to measure it in twenty seventeen when our CCE comes online. We have a great opportunity when we go carbon-free for our energy. And we can continue on by looking to electrify houses. And when we build these apartment complexes and houses, we can make them electrification-ready. We can make them solar-ready and we can really save a lot of natural gas and do some fuel conversion. So I think we have great poise to be leaders for the nation and the region for sure.
Thank you. Jim Davis.
I think the one question that I'd like to, to have asked and get an answer for is what is the status of public safety in our community? We rarely check with our citizens in regards to their satisfaction with our public safety services. But what the citizens don't realize that in the past eight or nine years, we've cut back significantly in the services that we provide. We no longer have a hazardous materials response team that can respond on a regular ongoing emergency basis. We don't have the five traffic officers that we used to have. We need to institute a burglary suppression team that works on a year-round basis rather than just at the holidays. Because of the fact that, you know, we have started to release so many more prisoners from state prisons and loosing them into our local communities, that we need to make sure that our community is better protected and can face those issues.
Thank you. Now it's time for the closing question. Jim Davis will be the first to respond. Why should voters choose you to serve on the city council?
Well, for the last five years, I've developed an extensive resume in regards to representation and on issues that address and our, our community confronts on a regular basis. I'm the representative to the Association of Bay Area Governments, which is the land use planning organization for the entire Bay Area. I sit on the County Expressway Board, which is the organization that, you know, looks at how much money we can spend on developing our expressways. I sit on the Grand Boulevard Task Force, helping to discuss and make decisions in regards to how we can best make our community functional. I sit on the Moffett Field Restoration Advisory Board, you know, where I make serious decisions in regards to the cleanup of Moffett Field and the future use of that. I serve on the California League of Cities, both on the Policy Advisory Committee and the Advocacy Committee for the Public Safety. I will serve as the chairman of the, the National League of Cities, Large Cities Conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Smith.
One of the things that I have going for me as a leader is that I can look at a variety of viewpoints and listen to people and consider a variety of viewpoints and find solutions in common. I like to solicit opinions from a lot of people before I make a decision. And I would like to work with my council colleagues to make a few changes, to make relations better among staff, the people of the citizens of Sunnyvale and the council itself. We have a great city here and we need council members who are great leaders, who are innovative thinkers and who can bring people together to find solutions in common for the things that we are concerned about. So that's why I ask for your vote on November eighth for Nancy Smith for Sunnyvale, City Council, seat six.
Thank you. Let's, please join me in a round of applause for the candidates. They have agreed to stay afterwards so you can ask them questions. We will have a short break in between. If I may just quickly say a little bit about where to find the video link. I'm going to stand up so one moment while I change mics. It feels like I can't see you guys on the other side. All right, so for tonight's video, if you could look at the calendar listing of this event at LWVCS.org, that's League of Women Voters Cupertino-Sunnyvale, we'll have a link of the video right there. You can share that with your friends and neighbors. You'll also find other election events and videos on our website calendar of previous events we've had as well. Also want to encourage you to take a look at VotersEdge.org. It is a tremendous website full of information about both candidates and ballot measures and the money behind both. I think you'll enjoy what you see. We've been adding information every single day. I just saw one of the seats has now been posted live and we're working on getting the other Sunnyvale seats on the website as quickly as we can. I want to thank the city of Sunnyvale for the facilities and for videoing this forum, CAMVT, helping us with this. Thank you very much for taking the time to come tonight. We know you have other things to do, but we really appreciate you coming and participating in this. Please remember to cast your vote on the November eighth election. Good night.